This is the regular scheduled meeting for March 25th. The time is 7:30. Clerk, can you please do a roll call?
Mayor Protemblis.
I'm here.
Councilman Fleming.
Here.
Councilman Muir.
Here.
Councilor Rorback.
Here.
Councilman Soltis.
Here.
Councilor Wright.
Here.
Mayor Graffstein.
I'm here, thank you. The invocation and pledge this evening will be led by me. I ask everyone to stand if you would like. In a time of increasing darkness, we must respond with an increasing of light.
I'd like allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. First up, we have approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions this evening? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to presentations. So, we have one presentation. That is a proclamation declaring April 19th as Education and Sharing Day in the city of Madison Heights. And I'm going to read the proclamation. Whereas since 1978, Education and Sharing Day is an annual holiday recognizing the essential role of education and sharing in our society. And whereas this day honors Rabbi Menachem Mendel Schneerson in recognition of his importance of quality education that encourages a spirit of loving kindness and generosity in building a better future together. And on education, whereas on Education and Sharing Day, we renew our commitment to providing quality education and to teaching our children the values of kindness and sharing that prepare them for lives as good neighbors and good citizens. And whereas Education and Sharing Day serves as a platform for communities to come together, celebrate the value of education, and reaffirm their commitment to making a positive difference in the world through learning and sharing. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the city of Madison Heights acknowledges the importance of lifelong learning and proclaims Friday, April 19th, 2024, as Education and Sharing Day in the city of Madison Heights. And be it further resolved that the city of Madison Heights supports and encourages our residents to commemorate Education and Sharing Day through participating in various events and celebrations aimed at promoting education, community service, and civic engagement, including educational seminars, community service projects, student activities, and interfaith dialogues. And I'm going to ask Daniel Allen if he would like to receive this and if he has any words he'd like to say.
Ladies and gentlemen, citizens like to thank everyone on behalf of the entire community. I'm honored and grateful for the proclamation recognizing Education and Sharing Day in our city. Proclamation not only celebrates the transformative power of education, but also underscores our collective commitment to fostering unity, compassion, and lifelong learning. Education and Sharing Day serves as a reminder for the profound impact that each of us can make through simple acts of kindness and generosity. It is a testament to the enduring legacy of those who have dedicated their lives to promoting education and community service. As we commemorate the special day, let us reaffirm our dedication to building a brighter future for generations to come. Together, let us inspire one another, uplift our community, and strive for excellence in all of our endeavors. Thank you once again for this honor. I mean, Education and Sharing Day serve as a beacon of hope, inspiration for all of us.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have meeting open to the public. This is the opportunity for the public to speak. I ask that you come to the podium, give your name, address, or any affiliation with the city, direct your comments to me, and keep your comments to three minutes. And with that, I am opening public comment. And seeing no one wishing to speak, I'm going to close public comment. So, next up, we have the consent agenda. There are three items. The Director of Public Services, the Field Use Agreement with Madison Heights Little Baseball, the City Council Special Meeting Minutes of March 11th, and the regular meeting minutes from March 11th. Can I get a council, a council motion to approve that, please?
Your Honor, I move that council approves the consent agenda as presented.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
There is. Support.
Thank you. A motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those again say no, motion carries. And next up, we have the bid award purchases. First up is from the Director of Public Services, the City Property Mowing and Landscape Maintenance.
The general grass cutting contract for the city has now expired. United Landscape, the successful low bidder at the time, indicated to us that they could not extend their pricing for another year, prompting the DPS and purchasing to issue an invitation to bid for city property mowing and landscape maintenance. Upon tabulation, the low bidder is Green Meadows Landscape. Staff recommends that City Council award a three-year contract for city property mowing and landscape maintenance to Green Meadows Landscape of Rochester Hills, Michigan, at the unit prices provided. This represents an estimated annual amount of $164,397. Staff further requests that council authorize the city to proceed with the next two lowest qualified bidders, Expert Lawn and Snow of Warren and United Landscape of Almont, respectively, in the event that the contract with Green Meadows is canceled due to non-performance or other issues.
All right, thank you. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor. I move that we approve the contract, the three-year contract for city property mowing and landscape maintenance to Green Meadows Landscape of Rochester Hills at the unit prices provided, as well as authorize the city to proceed to the next two lowest qualified bidders, Expert Lawn and Snow of Warren and United Landscape of Almont, in the event that we have an issue or need to make a change from Green Meadows.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor.
All support. Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those again say no, motion carries. Next item, also the Director of Public Services, the 2024 R3 Residential Road Projects.
Unlike the sectional replacements completed in the 2023 R3 program, the 2024 projects are full reconstructions, requiring significant excavation and improvement to the subgrade as well as drainage improvements. Because of this, the successful bidder for the 2023 projects, Delicio Contracting, was unable to offer a contract extension due to the variety of distinct pay items between the two construction approaches. Therefore, we issued a bid for full road reconstruction. Upon review and as identified in the recommendation letter of the bid tabulation from Norwicke and Faust, our consulting city engineers, Delicio Contracting of Clinton Township, was the low bidder. Delicio is an experienced, longtime contractor of the city for this program and similar projects in other area municipalities. As I previously said, they did a 2023 sectional concrete replacement very successfully. So, staff would note that this bid award will not automatically commit the city to any of the projects in the upcoming 2025 fiscal year. Projects would only be authorized after the start of the budget. Therefore, staff recommends that, concurs with the recommendation of our city engineer, and recommends that City Council award the bid for the 2024 R3 residential road projects to the lowest responsible bidder, Delicio Contracting of Clinton Township, in the total project amount of $1,433,010.25. Funding is programmed in 2025 budget.
All right, thank you. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we award the bid for the 2024 R3 residential road project to the lowest responsible bidder, Delicio Contracting Incorporated of Clinton Township, for the total project amount of $1,433,010.25.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor. Support.
Thank you. A motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor. I believe our DCS are here. Can, I know in our, in our packet, it tells us which sections are on the agenda for this year for reconstruction. I think it would be nice for our public to hear maybe what those are. Could you give us a little update on that?
Certainly. Good evening, Mayor and Council. For the R3 road reconstruction, which will be starting just before July 1, we have Hampton from 11 Mile to Greg, Palmer from Woodside to LaSalle, two segments of brush from 13 to LaSalle and from Woodside to Gerard. Now, we are doing the water main on the full stretch, all three blocks. And then, the sectional is East LaSalle near Hiller Elementary. We did some work there last year. We're going to be spreading out from there.
Thank you. And for the, for these reconstruction, the full reconstruction with the water main, that's going to mean that those folks are going to have, you know, not access to their road for a period of time. What is the timeframe typically?
Yeah, we generally estimate about eight weeks from construction start, weather depending, of course. And during which time, we will first do the water main, then replace the sidewalks. So, there's always sidewalk access, or at least pave gravel path to the home, then we start the road project. So, at the very least, no matter what stage of construction we're in, you'll be able to walk to the home.
And one more question, sorry. I know that a lot of trees are impacted during this time. Can you explain the process for taking down and replacing trees for these, in these projects?
I can. So, we're lucky in this stage, we, it looks like we only have one mature tree that has to come down because the areas have a relatively narrow greenbelt, so they don't have a lot of trees. Any trees that the city removes as a result of a construction project are replaced at no cost to the homeowner. And then further, we also have our tree replacement program, which is funded out of the general fund, and then we use that to match any grants we can get. It's currently waitlisted, but you can apply online, and as soon as you get to the point on the waitlist where we have the money and you're up, we put a tree in front of your house at no charge to you.
Thanks. I think, are there any other questions, comments? Counsel? All right, seeing none, thank you very much, Mr. Valentine. Appreciate it. All right, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those again say no, motion carries. And our final item, final item, the Skynet IT Contractor Wireless Network Upgrade.
Skynet, the city's IT contractor, is requesting to purchase 18 Cisco wireless access points along with 18 three-year subscription license to be used to improve wireless capabilities across the city as part of their wireless network upgrade project at a cost of $18,540. The cost of labor will be an additional $8,100, with a total project cost of $26,640, coming in below the budgeted $35,000. This will be a migration of one singular platform that is cloud-hosted. ITAC has been, that's the Information Technology Advisory Committee, has been consulted on this project and provided an update through the quarterly review process by Skynet. Therefore, staff recommends the approval of the purchase of 18 Cisco Monarchie MR44 wireless access points and 18 three-year subscription license from CDWG of Chicago, Illinois, under the Michigan Master Computing MI deal agreement in the amount of $18,540 plus labor of $8,100, for a total amount of $26,640. Funding is budgeted in the current year budget.
All right, thank you. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor.
I move that we approve the purchase of 18 Cisco Monarchie MR44 wireless access points and then 18 three-year subscription licenses from CDWG of Chicago, Illinois, under the Michigan Master Computing MI deal, in the amount of $18,540 plus labor costs of $8,100, for a total amount of $26,640.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor. Support.
Thank you. A motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor.
Yes.
Yeah, just really quick, as was noted, our ITAC, our Information Technology Advisory Committee reviewed this, and it's part of a longer-term strategy with us and Skynet, the city's IT contractor, which, by the way, it still hurts me every time I say that because like, can Skynet be a good thing for any Terminator fans? But we, we're trying to migrate a lot more into the cloud. We're trying to have a little bit more control over security with more recent patches. And we wanted to make sure that the coverage was acceptable throughout city buildings. And what I love about what we're voting on here is it's able to come in under budget. We were able to basically utilize less than what we projected to be able to come in under what the budget is. And so, really happy with staff, with, with Skynet, as hard as it is to say, and then our IT Advisory Board, because a lot of great work comes into little projects like this that allow our staff to be able to do the work that they need to do on behalf of our residents. So, that's it, Your Honor.
All right, thank you. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those again say no, motion carries. And with that, we are done our meeting. I'm going to invite closing comments.
Thank you. So, last couple of weeks have been busy. Made it out to the MML Conference, CAPCon out in Lansing, which was pretty educational. Last week was busy with Madison Heights Youth Assistance. On Monday and Tuesday, we had a joint planning City Council meeting. That was extremely eye-opening for me and was a great night of getting together with the planning folks and see what they've got in store for us coming with the new zoning. And then Wednesday, I was able to attend the Oakland Thrive event, which was showcasing a lot of our Oakland Thrive, our Oakland community, small businesses. I'm glad we passed the proclamation on Education and Sharing Day. Education is very near and dear to my heart. I've been pretty involved with schools for a long, long time and feel that, the Booster Club president for 28 years. I know, I know, they couldn't get rid of me. But, and I always made sure that the kid said, "I'm a student athlete. I'm not an athlete who goes to school here." You're a student first, and your education is for athletics helps you with the focus on being good in school. So, education very near and dear to me. Also want to thank the city for their support for the Little League Baseball. Been really great working with the DPS folks over the last several years. Brook Hyther has been fantastic working with us on getting the fields that we need to practice and keep the kids out there active. I'm happy to say that we have over 150 kids signed up this year. Those numbers keep growing since COVID, so I'm pretty excited about that. They were given the opportunity very, very cheap for our kids to get out and play a little baseball. Play ball. Today's the last day of registration, by the way, so.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Bliss?
Yes, Your Honor. Yeah, you've got, what, four hours and, what is, what is that, 13 minutes to be able to register if you want to? I know there's 1,000 people watching us live right now, so take note of that. Couple things, as we were talking, and DPS Director Sean Ballantyne covered the tree replacement. I cannot believe, I looked it up while I was up here. We instituted that replacement on construction projects all the way back in 2017. And now, it's such a staple of what we do and the ability to expand on that for trees in our community. Love it. And so, I just wanted to highlight the hard work of staff because that was a budget line item that was difficult to fund back in 2017. And we're going into our budget meeting next month, and it hasn't even been discussed because it's now just a part of what we do. So, really incredibly thankful for that. As Councilman Muir noted, we had a joint meeting with our Planning Commission and our City Council. Mayor Graffstein and I serve on the Planning Commission as representatives of the council. And it was great to be able to get everybody up to speed on the hard work that our staff and our Planning Commission, which is all volunteers in the city, have been doing for the last effectively six years to be able to build a new master plan, come up with new zoning. And you'll see, I believe at the very next meeting, the April 8th meeting, will be the first reading where we're passing the new zoning. We'll go into it a lot deeper there. But, really exciting times for the city. Things like accessory dwellings, so you can have a mother-in-law suite on top of your garage, are going to be a lot easier in this new zoning. It's going to be a lot easier for the types of businesses we want in our community to come in, and it'll be a lot harder for the ones that we don't. So, really, really exciting things down, I mean, literally a couple of weeks away, so excited about that. I'm also thrilled that our recreation brochure, for the first time, this hit every door in the city, and it always does, but this is the very first time that programs from our boards and commissions were included in the recreation brochure. And so, you were able to see Trail Tunes on there. We've got a great history of music presentation with the Historical Museum coming up in a few weeks. I believe Juneteenth was on there. And so, it's some really, really great, how do I put it? I think it's a pretty phenomenal thing that now those big events, the things that our boards and commissions are working on, are able to be not just included in there, but I believe it was one of the front pages. And so, really showcase the hard work that our volunteers do to bring programs like that into our community. So, very thankful, hoping that it inspires a lot more attendance as people put that into their calendar from the rec brochure. And finally, I want to give a shout out to council members Muir and Fleming. I got an email, as many parents did who have middle school students. I got an email about how to use the designated crosswalks, how to arrive to and from school safely. And I know that that's a lot of the work that's been done in the City School Liaison Committee. And I'm also thankful, you know, as well for Mayor Graffstein and Councilman Soltis because we have, because of this last settlement, $50,000 specifically designated to improving traffic safety in our community. And if that means one less accident involving a minor in our city, I'm very thankful for that. So, that's it, Your Honor.
All right, thank you. Mr. Wright?
I'll say, thank you. I serve on the school liaison committee.
Oh, yeah, apologize.
No, no worries. I just thought I would correct that. Just remind everybody to be kind. And happy Women's History Month to all the fantastic women out there.
Thank you. Mr. Sherman?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
All right, Mrs. Marsh?
Just a quick reminder that if you are a regular attendee at our council meetings, our meetings in April are going to be April the 8th and the 15th instead of the 2nd and 4th Mondays due to holiday change. And if you want to join us on the 15th, that's also the day of our budget meeting, so it'll be a lot of fun.
All right, thank you. Anything from the clerk's office this evening? All right, Ms. Rorback?
I'm just going to wish everybody some wonderful upcoming holidays. Holy is today, so Happy Holy for those who celebrate. Ramadan Mubarak for those who celebrate. And Happy Easter. And then next month, we've got Passover, so it's going to be an exciting, it's an exciting time in our, in our community. Lots of people are celebrating many different things. And I just hope and wish everybody enjoy their time together and have meaningful and powerful times together as families. I also, as Councilman Muir said, the Oakland Thrive event was last week with many Oakland County small businesses. And I was really excited because we had five Madison Heights businesses represented there. And so, D Asian Media was there, Schwarmacastle, Club Venetian, Not Just Noodles, and Noodletopia were all represented. And there were 15 businesses from around the county, and five of them were from Madison Heights. And tell you what, it was one of the best food nights of my, my year so far, so it was pretty great. And they were, a lot of it had to do with those restaurants that were from Madison Heights that were represented. So, if you've never tried any of these folks, please make it out to them because they have, we in Madison Heights have some of the best food in all of Metro Detroit. So, please make your way out to those places, support our local businesses, and thank you. That's it.
All right, thank you. Mr. Fleming?
No comments tonight.
Mr. Soltis?
Yes, so in two weeks, don't forget, the eclipse is coming. It's once in a lifetime. Make sure you got your glasses. Oops, sorry. Because you don't want to look at it without it. And so, also, for the trip to Lansing and the seniors, we're going to do that this year. So, if you, if you're interested in coming with us, you can either contact me, email me, or the City Manager's Office. And it's May 1st is when it's going to come, when we're going to go out. I think we're going to be driving in the real nice van that we got. And so, every time that we went, I think it was four or five times, and it's a fantastic thing. You know, they get a free lunch. We sit in the gallery. They recognize the seniors that are sitting there. And it's a really good time. And it's all the state, or excuse me, all the cities that come up from Michigan for that. Also, to talk about a staple, I want to compliment Mayor Protem. Back, the ITAC was at least six years ago.
Ten.
Ten years ago. Wow. And he came up with that idea, it sounded like out of nowhere, but it was, what a fantastic idea. idea. And so, you know, I really want to compliment him on that because that was, that was a home run, so. And that's all, thank you.
All right, thank you. So as Mr. Muir said, he and I and a few others were busy over the last couple of weeks. And so I was at the Thrive Oakland event in Royal Oak, and it was great. There were a lot of small businesses, and there were actually, I guess, Councilor Warback, you mentioned five of them. There were two other businesses from Madison Heights, so there was Feel Good Cookies, and they're new, but they were there. And then I don't know what the name of the business was. It was, she was selling banana bread, and it's one of the women who-
Brenda's Banana Bread.
Brenda's Banana Bread, okay. So Brenda is one of the women who works over at Cher. She has a little salon over there, so seven out of, you said 20, roughly?
Well, there are two different groupings. I only mentioned the paid vendors.
Gotcha. Okay, so it was still a lot of, a lot of Madison Heights small businesses there, which was great. So our next meeting is April 8, which is the day of the eclipse, but the eclipse is supposed to be, I believe, from 2-ish to 4-ish or 3-ish somewhere in the afternoon, so everyone should be able to be here for 7:30 for the meeting if you're going somewhere to see it. And yes, wear the glasses. I don't know if they still have any, but the library was, the library did have some. I'm not sure if they still have them. The time is 7:56, and this meeting is adjourned. Good night.